Good evening, welcome to what you call the board's office. We stand with time for three operative boards to keep order on rise and.
Goodbye, I'm the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
We get out just at the passage, like we like to do. I'll switch forward, is that, is that very few months, but I, I'm being marked on the chairman of the.
Rich Nader, town council.
Karen Wannertown Council, I should have, Jeff Pennyham, town council.
Tim Peagle, town council.
Bob Perel, planning and zoning.
Chairman of Senate, planning and zoning, Dean Kavalkovich in the wetlands.
Kevin Corr, planning and zoning, chair.
Ray Zatorski, planning and zoning.
Jay Hartland, conservation lake commission vice chair.
Chuck Yankner, conservation lake commission.
Cheryl Lobo, lake commission.
Bob Hart, conservation lake commission.
Megan Joseph, inland wetland.
Wes James, lake commission.
Angeles Tamaro, planning and zoning commission.
Jim Prue, building official and interim zoning.
Sean Hall, recreation director.
David Cox, I'm the town manager, I'll remind everyone use your outside voice or your stage voice or whatever you want to call it so that everybody can hear. John?
I'm John Guskowski, the interim town planner and.
Kevin, you want to introduce yourself?
John, you're not coming through.
The big, the big, and welcome. The council's vice members, the three operative commissions and agencies, planning and zoning, our inland wetlands and water enforcement agency, and conservation lake commission, all of whom are appointed by the town council to deal with issues in the lake watershed. Also invited are the interim planner, building enforcement officer, and town manager, David Cox, among, amongst other staff. As in any group with more than one participant, several invitees have conflicts and regrettably could not attend this evening. Notwithstanding, there have been concerns raised by our town citizens on the impact to Lake Pocahontas from the P and Z approved development end water and timber harvesting without a permit or application on lakewood drive. As staff obtained more information, some citizens circulated their own interpretation with political regulations and found to be inaccurate in this meeting. There were also recommendations from within the council with motions to enforce or harm regulations or impose moratoriums on development or timber harvesting. It became clear that an understanding of the regulations was necessary, followed by possible revisions, enforcement, and moratorium. I know some are not satisfied with the very limited agenda this evening, but that will not limit you or participants from commenting, posing questions, or discussing the issues. There are some who have expressed disappointment that there is no opportunity for public comment. This is a workshop, not a town committee council meeting. It is intended to provide us information and help those with the regulatory responsibility address these concerns. Only regular council meetings provide for public comment under our bylaws. With over thirty invited participants, time was also considered, as well as the fact that the last three or four town council meetings have had numerous citizens make public comment. And even the weekly for about the last three, four, five meetings. And in addition, P and Z and inland wetlands have also extended that privilege. We all understand the issue and concerns. I don't believe we would be gaining anything new if that were an agenda item today. For those concerned, action is not occurring fast enough. Things are and will continue to improve. None of us are opposed to restoring Pocahontas to its once pristine state. We are not abandoning these goals or efforts, and just, just maybe we will not see another year of unprecedented rain, most in a hundred and twenty-five years, which exacerbated runoff. It is my responsibility as town council chairman, along with my council colleagues and town staff, to comply with the rules and regulations and law, even if other parties are not. I'm sure you would agree, we cannot afford to subject our town to unnecessary litigation. And now I'm going to ask our town manager, David Cox, to address some of the issues such as the holding of public hearings, regulatory enforcement and reporting, and then let members of P and Z, inland wetlands, and CLC comment and discuss what they will be doing going forward with an opportunity or other questions or comments. David?
Okay, thank you, John, we're going to try and see if we can hear you. There really are, there were sort of two specific questions that I asked, can you say something, John, real quick?
Yeah, can you hear me any better now?
We can hear you now, okay, I got it squared. There were really two questions that had come up over time that I wanted to address a little bit, and, and I wanted John to, to do that for two reasons. One, John has been a planner and part of the planning landscape in the state of Connecticut for a great many years, and has a great deal of experience with not only, well, with many municipalities in the state. As you all probably have learned, John has served a number of municipalities as a planner and in various other land use related capacity. But I also wanted him to address it because I wanted him to add that context to what he knows and has learned about our regulations and how they apply to each other. And so first I'll have him address that question of to public hearing or not to public hearing, or to public comment or not public comment, as the question may be. But then I also will ask him to talk a bit about the various responsibilities of the bodies in the room and how they overlap and how they work in parallel to each other as well. So, John, if you would, the public comment, public hearing question.
Okay, so generally speaking, a municipality, the, the boards and commissions of a municipality are empowered either by state statute or by local ordinance. And, and procedures, particularly those by state statute, are specific to allow a commission to be designated by the municipality to handle certain items of business. You know, there's a great tradition in New England of, of having town meetings where everyone gets together and everyone gets to speak and everyone gets to decide. But in the case of regulatory entities, particularly wetlands and planning and zoning, these commissioners are elected or appointed to manage a process, to establish rules, and to review applications and, and proposed developments, proposed changes, based on those rules. They are the deciding body. And the public, and, you know, because of freedom of information, because of our open government, the public is invited to attend and, and witness government inaction, witness these appointed or elected officials do their jobs. But not everyone gets a vote. Not every member of the public has the right to speak on any application at any time, at any meeting. They have the right to participate, they have the right to, you know, to petition, to submit testimony where appropriate. But insofar as applications are being guided by regulations and by a state statutory process, commissions are authorized and in many cases really should be handling these matters themselves. So, every, every meeting of a board or a commission is a public meeting. They're open, people can participate, and people can, people can attend and can view in person, online. But not every meeting is a public hearing. And there is a very significant difference between a public meeting and public hearing. Public hearings are, you know, prescribed by, again, statutes and, and ordinances and regulations. In the case of wetlands, the, a public hearing can be held if the inland wetlands agency believes that the proposed activity that is regulated by that entity, by the wetlands commission, is of significant public interest, will have, will have an impact on, on the community. Or in, in the case, again, of a petition, if a, a minimum number of people petition for a public hearing, again, something that is regulated by the wetlands commission. Just because something is discussed by the wetlands commission does not necessarily mean that it is subject to a public hearing because of significant public interest or because of petition. You know, someone could submit a letter or a complaint or something like that, that doesn't necessarily rise to the level of an application. The, the wetlands commission is not enabled or required to have a public hearing on that matter. In the case of planning and zoning, there are several categories of permits within the, within the regulatory structure. First is administrative permit, and what we would call an as-of-right permit, which is if you're building a single-family house in a single-family zone, you get a permit from the zoning officer just to make sure that, that, you know, you meet all your setbacks and your coverage and your height and that sort of thing. That never comes to the commission, it is an administrative permit. The public is obviously free to review these documents, but it, it takes place at a, at a staff level. And there are several things in the regulations that are designated to staff. The planning and zoning commission is in charge of their own regulations. So if they wish to have a public hearing every time someone builds a single-family residence, or someone builds a gazebo or a deck out the back, they can make that a special permit procedure. In, in no case, as I know, in many towns, do they do that, it is generally an administrative procedure, but that is a regulatory decision. The second level of permits, in particularly in, in East Hampton and in many communities, are site plan review. These are, these are allowable uses in a given zone, let's say, a, a retail business in a commercial zone, that are not as-of-right, it's not a staff level, but it is not designated as a special permit or a special exception. It's a site plan review is strictly a commission level decision, commission level discussion, that does not require a, a public hearing. That it's generally, if it's, if it's a residential use in a residential zone, if it's a commercial use in a commercial zone, but the commission wants to take a look to make sure parking, lighting, traffic, all those things are sort of taken care of and considered, they will bring it to the commission, have a commission level, not a public hearing, but a commission level process and decision. The third level is a special permit, and these are for things that are not generally anticipated to be allowed in that district or require an additional level of scrutiny to determine that the proposed use in that district will not interfere with the orderly activities and, and, and use of surrounding properties. And that use will not create an undue disturbance. And that is when a public hearing is required. And that is an opportunity for members of the public, because this is a special exception or a special permit, to say, listen, no, this use is unusual for this location, for this district, and we invite people to, to weigh in on their, their views of its anticipated impacts. So all of these things are, take place in public, the public has access to all of these things, but only in, when a, when a public hearing is mandated or decided upon by the commission, is the public invited to speak. Now there's, in, in both of these commissions, in planning and zoning and in wetlands, there is a an agenda category where people, where members of the public are invited to say something, it's a public forum. This is not something that is required of commissions, this is something that, that or, you know, for various reasons, commissioners have decided that they want to invite the public to speak. Because certain applications have certain processes, a site plan review, an administrative review, a special permit, generally speaking, the, the public is asked to address things that are not already on the agenda by, that are already being dealt with in their statutorily or regulatorily directed process. So ideally, the public, you know, the, these applications are being dealt with in the way that the regulations set them up to be dealt with. The public is not being invited to say, I, I want to deal with this something else, we, I recognize that you have a site plan review that is not a public hearing, I want to speak about it all the same. You know, whereas, you know, we have, we have freedom of speech and we have, we have right to express ourselves, within the framework of a set of regulations and the commission action, these meetings shouldn't be free-for-alls, people, you know, don't have the right to say whatever they want in any circumstance, in any context, at any time. We need to follow rules, and, and the, the, the board sets its own agenda, and, and each chairman is in charge of, of managing that meeting. People aren't automatically authorized to speak at any time, on any subject, at any meeting that they want. There, there are rules and there are, there are, there is procedure. And, and this, I think, is somewhere where things have gotten a little bit, I think, off the rails at, at recent meetings, because the public, you know, rightfully or wrongfully feels aggrieved by things that they perceive that are happening, that are being dealt with at an administrative level, at a site plan level, or in some cases, at a, a special permit application level that is, that is moving through the process. But the public wishes that they, they should have the right to speak on it whenever they, whenever they want. And I, I would, you know, encourage the commission to stick, it commissions to sort of stick to the procedures and, and if they feel that certain activities need to be dealt with in a more public-facing way, a more public hearing process, they need to re-categorize some of these activities as special permits, special activities that would require public hearings. Otherwise, the rules dictate the administrative or the site plan review process that should be managed by the commission and their staff. That's a lot of speaking, and you had another question in there, Dave?
But before we go there, two things, one, the commissions, that is inland wetlands and planning and zoning commission, which are often working as a regulatory body, could, on almost any matter, decide to have a hearing, correct?
Um, yes, but.
In particular, that the inland wetlands has that as part of their regulations, that they could decide.
Yes, so wetlands does have, have more latitude to, to have that public hearing, because they are, they are asked to take a look at the, the public interest in the, in the matter. In the case of in the case of planning and zoning, if it's an administrative approval or review, or a site plan reviewer approval, yes, technically, the commission could have a public hearing on that. But that, that creates a precedent of, of giving the public the sense that they have more control over the matter than they do. Because even if you have a public hearing on a site plan review, and that site plan application meets a hundred percent of the regulations, they are guaranteed approval. It does not matter if we have three thousand people show up and say, I don't like this retail use in this retail shop. If they meet the site plan regulations, the public gets no vote, the regulations dictate. So, yes, you could technically hold a public hearing on an issue of general public interest, or, you know, people don't want another GameStop in town, or something like that. But if it meets the regulations, that commission is bound to approve it by their own regulations and process. So, yes, you can have a public hearing, but you may be opening the door to give the public the impression that they have more authority than they do under the regulations.
I think what you're saying is that the comments received may color the approval, but it doesn't necessarily change the fact that it may get approved.
It, it doesn't override the, the weight of the regulations themselves.
Okay, okay. I don't know if you want to allow people to ask questions on that public hearing kind of question, or?
Sure.
There, that the body might have, body's rhythm right now.
Anyone that has any questions regarding this, with varying matters?
I don't necessarily have a question, but can we just clarify for the public how they would submit comments? If they wanted to comment, is something they are supposed to go through the building department, correct?
Yeah, I would direct it to the staff responsible for whatever commission they're, they're addressing.
I'd like to add something for clarification, isn't it true that in any of our meetings, the public can come and they can comment for up to the allotted time during public comment, both in the beginning and the end? That's the time for the public to speak and there's no back and forth, could you clarify that for the public, because that is?
Wes, it's not a matter of right. The council does create its own bylaws under which it operates, and we do provide for public comment twice, you know, in the beginning, third or fourth item on the agenda, and then, yeah, the next to the last on the agenda. Not every border commission does the same, I'm not first to everyone, there's all their individual procedures, but it is a matter of the council establishes that.
Oh, so is there any, is there any council that doesn't allow public comment in the beginning and end, and limit it to two to three minutes? I thought that was standard, at least in our town.
That's right, in, in our town, with the town council, it is regular meetings only.
For planning and zoning, we just have public comment at the beginning, we don't have anything.
Is there a time limit set?
We typically will, depending on the topic, limit it to three minutes. But sometimes we let it go a little bit, depending on the topic and who's presenting it.
The conservation lake commission, we do three minutes at the beginning and at the end, three minutes, I get out my clock, my cellphone, so it's timed for three minutes, and we do not respond. Meaning, we listen to the comment, but there's no back and forth at the meeting. We have not had the contentious meetings that, that you've had at planning and zoning and at inland wetlands. And large part, I think, is because you get a back and forth going. You know, and that, that creates a problem. But I think it's very important to have the public comments, because that's the feedback from the citizens. And I, I think it's a, a very, which is dangerous, probably is too strong word, but not to have public comments and not get a sense of what people are interested in, and it's a good source of how we find out about problems. I mean, in the case of the lake commission, we've got problems with groundwater running into the lake. I don't know about it, because it's going down into the Bay Road, I'm on Spelman Point. So, we've got the severity and are understood the severity and the depth of the problem through those public comments. So I, I really encourage boards and commissions to accept the public comment, but don't turn it into a public hearing by, by having the responding, you just have to say, thank you very much for your input, we'll take it under consideration.
Wetlands does have a public comment period at the beginning, near the beginning of the meeting and near the end. We ask that they don't relate any agenda items, and we don't have a specific time limit, but we ask that they be made brief.
Chairman, ZBA does the law, I'm the co-chair.
And I think it's worth noting that that has been, if you will, the advice that's given when my office is asked, or when we've talked about it with boards and commissions, is that culturally, and I use that word intentionally, culturally, in East Hampton, we have had that beginning and end comment, but take, just don't forget what John talked about, is the, the difference between the bodies that are in this room and the other bodies that serve the town, that are advisory bodies, Conservation Lake and many of its functions, library advisory board, arts and culture council, you know, clean energy task force, these are advisory bodies to the town council. Their actions, the things that they accomplish in general form, are done at the approval of the council. The inland wetlands agency and the planning and zoning commission are regulatory bodies. And that's, I think that's the difference that John was pointing out, and that'll remind everyone, they're regulatory bodies. So they have a very specific framework within which they must work. Whether it's the statutory framework provided in the general statutes, or it's the local framework provided in their own regulations, what have you. But that's, I think, the important distinction there. So certainly we appreciate, and, and we're all working in the public sector and, and for the public. We appreciate that the public has an opportunity, that we give the public an opportunity to express their concerns, and I think you're right, Chuck, it does at times bring things to the attention of the councils or to the body to whom that person is addressing, that it may not ignore, that it may choose to dress.
In case anyone's misled, the regulations of P and Z require that any subdivision have a public hearing, I'm just point that out.
Certainly, there are things that do require them, yeah, absolutely.
A subdivision is a, it's a required element to have a public hearing under their regulation. So just, I don't want people to get from that statement that certain, there's certain actions that will require a public hearing.
Yep, definitely, and in that case, there would be back and forth comments.
Yeah, public hearing by nature has comments back and forth.
Just so people understand, the three-minute, the three-minute rule comes or emanates from the legislature, they've used that for seventy or eighty years. A lot of time, you don't speak to a public hearing, it's carried down to most of municipalities in the state or boards and agencies or commissioners. And if we talk fast enough, or read fast enough, it's probably equivalent to a three-hundred-word letter in the Middle East. And as, I'll feel like, and as with the council, we have provisions now where written testimony can be submitted after a meeting in supported public comments. after a meeting in supported public comments or a video of the tape of someone making similar in the presentation outside of the council.
So the other thing, John, I wanted you to talk about a bit is the 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 responsibilities of the three bodies, that is, um, planning, zoning, inland, wetlands and Conservation Lake Commission, especially where they have independent authority and where they have overlapping authority and responsibility.
Okay, that's a big question. The first thing I would I would just want to clarify is to sort of reinforce a comment that was made. I I I don't know by whom, um, who who stated that all all subdivisions require a public hearing. That is an absolutely true point, um, that that you have in your subdivision regulations, section 4.9 on the general subdivision of land. All it says, all a public hearing required of all subdivisions, which is actually going above and beyond the state statute, um, which the state statutes do not require a a public hearing for subdivisions, which is to say the first division of land. Uh, they are required for all re-subdivisions, which is second and subsequent divisions of land, but statutorily, it's not required. So, in this case, um, the the local regulations, the subdivision regulations goes above and beyond state statutory requirements and does require a public hearing in all cases. Um, so that's, it's a, it's an important and interesting distinction that the commission, at least in this case, the planning and zoning commission, can ramp up its regulatory review of certain uses. So, oversight, um, we'll, we'll start with, uh, the Conservation Lake Commission, which is an entity created by town ordinance. It's not created by state statutes. You're not a creature of of state regulations. And so all of the authority, um, that the Conservation Lake Commission has is created by by the town and can be modified by changes to the ordinances. Conservation Lake, uh, is, you know, sort of responsible for the general oversight and monitoring of of water quality in Lake Pocatara Park and its watershed. Um, it is only, um, given the ability to comment in an advisory way on referrals that are sent to it, uh, again, by ordinance and by regulation by the wetlands and and planning and zoning commission. So they are in a non-regulatory advisory capacity, but they are a mandatory recipient of applications um, that would, uh, affect the the Lake Pocatara Park area. And and this case, I believe, in the case of of of, um, the zoning regulations, it would be all special permits in the Lake Pocatara Park, uh, area. Um, and the same with, the same with, uh, wetlands applications. Um, so they, again, are advisory and I believe the they're, um, they have a a scientific consultant that is able to add, you know, review and commentary of technical applications um, sent again by one of these two referring regulatory entities. Both planning and zoning, um, and I'll treat planning and zoning as a as a single entity. They're, the the planning part and the zoning part have separate, um, statutory bases. But, uh, you know, in in East Hampton, they're a combined commission and so they they handle all of the, all of those statutory matters. And wetlands are both are both creatures of the state, um, and are, um, given separate authorities. Uh, the wetlands commission is actually, um, essentially a a a mini deputized DEP. More than a municipal entity, D, uh, the wetlands commission is is basically functions as a small, local, uh, environmental protection agency for the for the community. Um, and is is generally governed by sort of model regulations established by the state with some flexibility. Their flexibility is primarily in how they identify what's referred to as the upland review area. So the wetlands commission not only regulates and and, um, reviews activity in a wetland itself, a wetland or water course. Let's say you're, you know, uh, putting a, putting a culvert through a wetland, you know, to to allow for water flow and and put a road over that. That's activity in a wetland. Most of the activity that the wetlands commission, um, deals with is upland review, which is to say it's not directly affecting wetlands, but it is in proximity of of wetland or water course area. And that that each town is given some flexibility on how it defines that upland review area or that essentially area of activity that gets looked at because it could affect a wetland area. Um, and in your case, uh, East Hampton regulates, um, regulated activity in in a couple of different ways. If it's just, um, a standard wetlander water course, not in any sensitive watershed, the upland review area is 100 feet. So if you're, if you're, if you have a small stream in your backyard and you're within 100 feet of that, you want to put in a gazebo, you want to do some some clearing. If you're in 100 feet of that, you come to the wetlands commission for their review of your impact on wetlands. And the wetlands commission by by statute and by regulation is charged with, um, reviewing the the proposed activity, but the measures taken, um, by that activity and by the the construction, um, elements of that activity to have their, what are the impacts on the wetland relative to the ability of the property owner to, um, receive economic value and enjoyment of their property. So there is a requirement for balancing. It is not a, uh, a ban. It is not a buffer area. If you are within 100 feet of wetlands, you can do nothing. Um, that is not the case. It is just that activity is regulated and the and the app, the wetlands agency must do that balancing of, um, environmental sensitivity and potential impact on a wetland versus, uh, a private property owner's inherent rights to enjoy their property. So it's 100 from, uh, 100 feet from a a standard wetland or water course. Um, you are, you increase that upland review area, that that analysis area to 150 feet uh, from the boundary of the Salmon River itself, 150 feet from the boundary of the Connecticut River. And and you increase that upland review area to 200 feet, um, from any body of, uh, wetland or water course within the Lake Pocatara Park watershed area. So that area was deemed much more sensitive. And so the the upland review area, uh, for regulated activity is broader in that area. But again, the the same rules apply that the wetlands commission has to has to analyze the likely impact to that sensitive environmental resource against the rights of of people to enjoy and use their properties. Generally speaking, um, activity, the regulated activity, this is, these tend to be, you know, when you're disturbing the soil somehow, you're building something, you're excavating something, or you're you're somehow changing the the surface environment in in such a way that may negatively or could potentially negatively affect the environmental resource. Because so much activity that is deemed regulated by the wetlands commission is also activity that involves changing the land use. Um, almost always, applications have to get some wetlands review and planning and zoning review if they are in in one of those, one of those upland review areas. Um, procedurally, uh, you've, and by statute, if you are subject to both both regulations, you must submit your wetlands application either first or no later than your planning and zoning application. Um, so you you basically don't get to, you know, get a, get a planning and zoning approval to build a new house and then later go to wetlands if it's if it's in an upland review area. You have to do the wetlands essentially first. Um, and planning and zoning, in fact, where they have statutory timeframes, there is, planning and zoning very frequently has very strict statutory time clocks. That time clock is often put on hold until the wetlands commission makes a decision. This is, uh, planning and zoning does not have to necessarily agree with the wetlands, um, decision. So for instance, if someone was looking to to build a garage in their backyard that is right on a pond, um, wetlands could say no. Planning and zoning could say, we understand what wetlands is saying here. We disagree. We will approve it. That's not to say you can build it because you still need both approvals. But planning and zoning is not bound by the decision of wetlands. They just have to wait uh, for wetlands's report, wait, wait for wetlands's decision before planning and zoning follows up and makes their decision. So, generally speaking, planning and zoning and wetlands authorities run separate and parallel with with planning and zoning operating slightly behind the wetland schedule. Planning and zoning in their regulation does require, um, in a couple of sections, anything taking any any, um, significant activity, construction activity taking place in the Lake Pocatara Park Protection Zone does have to be referred to the Conservation Lake Commission and have a public hearing. Again, because that's, that is a local regulation, that is a local decision to treat certain categories of land use, certain categories of activity as more important and more highly scrutinized than others. So if you are, if you are building a house, um, you know, over by the by the Marlboro line away from the lake, it, there's not the same level of scrutiny as if you're building it right on Lake Pocatara Park. And that is a planning and zoning regulatory decision. Um, there's nothing in statute that requires the commission to treat certain land uses inherently differently than any others. And so, so the, there's a whole section in the zoning regulations that has been much scrutinized recently, the Lake Pocatara Park Protection Zone. That does require, and I'm quoting here, "All development within the watershed shall be subject, shall be subject to this regulation and application subject to action by the planning and zoning commission shall be referred to the Conservation Lake Pocatara Park Commission and are subject to a public hearing." So that is the planning and zoning commission's own self-imposed regulations. They wrote for themselves and they hold themselves to that any development activity must be referred to Conservation Lake and and subject to a public hearing, uh, development activity, which is, which is a very important word that we've been dealing with recently. And, uh, and again, so then then the Conservation Lake Commission, upon receipt of that, of that, that referral, does their own review and comments back to the planning and zoning commission, which takes it under advisement and is also similarly not bound by Conservation Lake's decision. So again, Conservation Lake could say, we hate this proposed garage on, uh, near the lake. We want to deny it. Planning and zoning could say, thank you for your input, Conservation Lake Association or Conservation Lake Commission. We're still going to go ahead and approve it, but the process needs to be followed. There are certain circumstances where something is, um, in the watershed uh, and therefore, um, subject to review by the planning and zoning commission by public hearing and the Conservation Lake Association or Conservation Lake Commission, but is not within 200 feet of, uh, the the water body or a wa, or a wetland, um, within the watershed. That does not need to go to wetlands, um, because of their, the limits that they've placed on their upland review area at 200 feet. I'll, I'll stop there. Uh, and we can, we can flush this out with with questions if people have questions.
I I have a question on, uh, that requirement 200 feet from wetland or is it tributary to the lake? Uh, should it be wetlands? Uh, does that include a storm drain which feeds the lake or even perhaps, uh, street flow which goes into a storm drain which feeds the lake if you're 200 feet from any of those areas?
No, I, generally speaking, a a storm drain, if it's, if we're talking about it's constructed, it's a, you know, it's a grate in a road that drains to a pipe, is not a wetland, um, or a water body. Um, it is, it is, it is, it is not a natural thing. If if you have a, a drainage ditch, you know, along the side of the road that over time has become saturated and the soils have changed their their makeup such that they are wetland soils, um, you know, a natural, a natural drainage channel, uh, could become a regulated wetland, certainly. An analysis of that wetland, I mean, in in order to, if you're affecting a wetland area, in ideal world, uh, you would provide a a functions and values assessment of that wetland. So, you know, a a drainage ditch, uh, that is, you know, frequently inundated and is along the side of the road, doesn't necessarily have the same ecological value as a a vernal pool or Lake Pocatara Park itself. So, whereas, you know, those two things could both be regulated wetlands, their value is is quite different, uh, from an ecological standpoint. But generally speaking, a, 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 a storm drain to a pipe is is not considered a regulated wetland.
I have a follow-up question on that with, um, regards to the upland review area. If you look at the definition of regulated activity, um, the last sentence of that description, it says, "The agency may rule that any other activity located within such upland review areas as you described or in any other non-wetland or non-water course area that is likely to impact or affect wetlands or water courses and is a regulated activity." So I I would take that you could extend the upland review area to anything in the watershed that would affect the lake and that it would, the wetlands would have to oversee the applications for those type of activities.
Right, right. And so that would be, um, right, the the burden would be on the 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 wetlands commission to demonstrate that there is a reasonable nexus, that there is reason to believe that this, let's say it's something that's happening 700 feet away from the lake, that there is some reason to believe that that the activity would, you know, it's, it would, would, would travel that 700 feet, the impacts of that activity would travel 700 feet um, and and affect the lake. And this, this actually was litigated, um, by the state Supreme Court several years ago relevant to, uh, vernal pools. I believe the the case was Avalon Bay, if I'm not mistaken, which was a housing development. Um, because vernal pools are a category of wetlands that sort of only exists for a couple of weeks a year. Um, when you have certain obligate species, fairy shrimp, um, you know, certain salamanders, um, that that, you know, appear in this small, you know, kettle, uh, for a a small amount of year. And the migratory pathways for amphibians around this vernal pool can extend several hundred feet. Uh, and in some cases, up to 750 feet. And so a a number of commissions, wetlands commissions around the state, were were extending that upland review area. Um, as as you said, um, if there is a, as there is a nexus or a reason to believe that there is some particular sensitivity about that, about that wetland or water body, regardless of distance um, or or at an extended distance. Um, but again, the burden would be on the wetlands commission to sort of point out what that nexus is and what that particular fear of adverse impact is. And it's, it's really, oughtn't be a blank check to say, I don't, I don't care if it's a mile and a half from Lake Pocatara Park. I'm I'm reviewing this thing. Um, it, there, there really should be a nexus.
I have one follow-up question. Does the the special Lake Pocatara Park watershed area not cover any activity in this area? It still has to be within 200 feet of the lake or tributary to the lake?
For, for, for what? For a wetlands review?
The town designated, uh, a special watershed zone in the last round of zoning. Does that mean that anything, any activity in that zone should have to adhere to this? Or it's still, they still won't have to come in unless it's 200 feet to the actual lake or an actual body of water feeding the lake?
Okay, so the here, you're, you're conflating two sets of regulations. And I think this is, this is maybe where Dave, why Dave wanted me to answer this question. So the 200 feet upland review area is a creature of the of the wetlands regulations. The Lake Pocatara Park Protection Zone is a creature of the the zoning regulations, the planning and zoning commission. So, both commissions have to stay in their lane and follow their own rules. Um, so as the, as a previous commissioner, um, and I'm sorry, you, you, you spoke at last night's hearing and I, and I forget your name already. Um, the, the new commissioner to to wetlands, um, is correct in in pointing out that the upland review area of the the wetlands agency can be extended under certain circumstances. And so in theory, again, if there was a nexus to believe that that any act, some activity at a, at a greater distance, but was still within the watershed, might negatively affect the the water resource or the wetland resource, then wetlands does have the ability to deem that a regulated activity. But the fact of something just existing within the watershed or the protection zone, that is a matter of planning and zoning. And and so that's an independent authority that is an independent set of of requirements.
So, so could you humor me and tell me what those set of requirements are? I I'm sorry, I I apologize. I don't, I didn't get a chance to read this information myself. I I'm just curious if the watershed protection area, when someone goes to do activity within that zone, they need to meet with planning and zoning, just for our information for moving forward, like, they or do they not have to go meet?
So, we're, we're, we're already being, we have to be very careful about the language you're using. What you just said, doing activity, that is not the, that is not the standard.
You corrected me. So a permitted activity, some work, major work that requires some type of permitting. And and I think the regulation says disturbance in excess of 500, uh, 500 square feet or 2,500 square feet. I don't know exactly what that is, but, um, whatever that number is, if they're in the watershed protection area, what's the requirement for getting that permit? what's the requirement for getting that permit?
The, so, okay, again, regulated activity is a, is a, is a term of art, a phrase used by the wetlands commission. The phrase used by planning and zoning in the like watershed, uh, protection zone is development. And so the development activity is subject to all of the requirements and review of section 3.1, which is the Lake Pocatapog Protection Zone. And that has, that has various requirements, um, which obviously you, you did some reading on that because you, you, you cited some specific numbers there.
Yeah, I was involved in that process with Jeremy. You know, we, I played commission for 10 years and it took us five years to get that passed.
Sure.
So I can't remember everything, but I'm assuming any major permitting development should have, should have to come to planning and zoning if it's in the protected watershed area.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure everyone's clear here.
Yeah, that's correct. And so I would, you know, I see a number of you with computers, including yourself. I would encourage you to take a look at section 3.1 of the zoning regulations.
Well. Okay, I'm trying not to be snarky here, but we got a nice little lecture about planning and zoning and interpretation and all this. I think most of it, everybody on these commissions is kind of pretty much aware of that stuff. I don't think that's a issue. What I'd like to talk about is solving the problems that we're having because the results is what the issue is. The results is brown water running into the lake, which that's what we got going on. And we have developers not following the procedures for the permits. I think we all agree that there was some permit should have been that answered and, and there's some problems with the, with the focus and the procedure is to get that done. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did a great job at their meeting last night of at least recognizing that and making sure they were playing, playing right by the book on the, uh, the thing. And I commend them for that. So I think there's progress being made in fixing those regulations. But I don't think it's worthwhile for us to be sitting here right now with all these people on this arguing about the words development and, uh, activity, those kinds of things. That's what needs to be cleaned up in these 3.1 regulations. I think we all agree on that. So I'd like to see us move on to talk about what we can do for regulations and what we can do to fix the problems. We got a lot of brain power here. Let's, let's use it.
Before we move on, can I ask a couple of clarifying questions? I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. Any work being done, I don't care what the terminology for the various committees, but any work being done in the watershed has a process that includes the Conservation Lake Commission potentially in the wetland water courses agency, but always planning and zoning. Is that correct?
I, well, see, I know you, you want to sort of rush past the, the wording being used, but, but wording is important. When you say any work being done. So if you're, if you're mowing your lawn in the watershed, do you need a permit? If you're trimming, if you're trimming your hedges, that's work. Right? That's not development.
You're being semantic about this and that's not helpful.
Words matter. Words matter.
I know they do, but we need to make sure that everybody's using the same ones. Right now, since let's just move past that part of it. We'll talk about permitted activities within the watershed. How do you process they have to go through? Some of those include IWWA, but not all of them. But all of them should include Conservation Lake Commission and Planning and Zoning. Is that correct?
All, all development activities, yes.
Okay, so everything in the watershed should go through Conservation Lake permitted stuff, um, yeah, that hedge trimming. But there's two bodies that should have visibility on the permits that get put through for work there.
Possibly three.
But John, isn't there, isn't there a question about whether or not timber harvesting falls within the definition of development?
Well, I think, I think a lot of, that we've heard a lot of opinions about that. Yeah, there. I think there'd be, I guess the, the question is, is there a question because people have questions? Or is there? Yeah.
Well, that's where, whether or not that was intended when these were written.
But the timber harvest is sort of separate because that's the time of year that it was supposed to be.
The, the reg is disturbance of over 2,500 square feet, if memory serves me correctly. So certainly that falls into that category.
Okay. And the second clarification I wanted was, we heard earlier subdivisions require a public hearing. Um, at what point does development meet the criteria as a, for a subdivision to get that public hearing?
Oh, and he, I, if you're proposing a subdivision, you have a public hearing.
All the time. But I guess my question is, is the clearing of the land in order to subdivide part of that process? Or can you clear cut everything and then say, "Now I want to subdivide this and then get the hearing?"
The two separate applications.
That's what I'm trying. Clarification for everybody, that's all.
There's a lot of stuff with timber harvest. Now, we're going back many, many years. I've been in our commission, you know, land use commissions for about 30 years. So we have a couple of things going on. Inland wetlands used to way back have timber harvests. That was their purview. That was it. And then I took all the courses when I was on inland wetlands and I remember them fairly well, because we went out and we actually saw before and after kind of things. So, so it was really great course that the state put on. Then it was taken away from them and it went to planning and zoning. Then it was taken away from them and it went to the state. Then it was taken away from them and extended to the state plus inland wetlands. And it hasn't been revisited to my knowledge back into planning and zoning. So a timber harvest is one thing. If they're doing a timber harvest, which many of them do, and then do nothing, it's just for, we do not get involved. We normally not see it. Everybody's horrified. In fact, I remember the instructor suddenly walked in, we're looking at this place, it looked like it was just clear cut. And he said, "If you are not absolutely positively horrified at this", they didn't do it right. Because they, the whole purpose is to have sunlight get onto the forest floor so that there could be both plant growth plus tree growth. And it is healthy for the forest. It's been proven over time. So that's the one thing. Now, if they do a timber harvest and then they do development, well, it's still a timber harvest. Even though they may be de- developing it, they're taking the value of the timber out first, then they're going to develop it. But inland wa- planning and zoning rather can't say, "Well, you're doing a timber harvest, therefore you're doing development, therefore you have to come before us." That's not how the state regulations are written.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is if we're saying that a subdivision has to put a public hearing, but the process in order to get to the subdivision can just, can be done without any public input?
That's not the case either from everything and all the law costs and stuff that have been put on for us. It is, a timber harvest is a timber harvest. And then if you're going to have development, then we get involved in it. But if we don't have an application in front of us, we can't go back by state statutes and say, "We don't like that timber harvest" or whatever it might happen to be, or we think your intentions are. We can't do it that way.
So an applicant, so just so that I understand, an applicant has to come to your board for a timber harvest?
No.
They can do it without any?
Administratively.
It's done administratively.
Okay.
Or in inland wetlands.
But there's seasonal restrictions on that, aren't there?
There are.
There are.
And well, but there's exceptions to those.
And there was a question last night at Planning and Zoning about what the exception was listed for that timber harvest application that the answer was never received and curious about that.
You get an answer on that, I'm glad.
Yeah. Because there's also the, the state law for wetlands and watercourses. To be able to have permitted cutting down of trees, a building permit has to already been issued for the subdivision.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that?
For, uh, the Connecticut tree state laws? For it just to be, uh, that you don't need a permit or anything to cut the trees down?
No.
A subdivision already has to be approved.
For a harvest, you need? Are you talking a harvest or just site clearing?
The following operations then you should, shall be permitted in wetlands and watercourses are right. So if you have a subdivision law provided a permit has been issued or subdivision has been approved by the municipal planning and zoning, this is talking about, uh, clearing of trees.
But that's after you already approved the subdivision?
After you approved the subdivision.
Yeah. Like you just.
Yes, but there is.
You could take a wooded, you could take a wooded lot and you can come to us and say that you want to develop it. And you don't have to do a, a timber harvest. It would be smart to do one, but you don't have to do one. You can wipe out everything. To put that subdivision.
Only if you have all the erosion sedimentation controls and there are there are a whole host of other engineering requirements that we have, especially for pre-development, post-development, during, um, construction and during, um, basically all of the, the hydrological issues have to be addressed, complete with the tables and all the calculations.
How do you know it's pre-development if they haven't really developed them? Play them first or an application. We don't trust their trees.
We, okay, we, if you're asking for tests, no, but there are guidelines for if this is this kind of soil, trees, there's, there's a whole series of guidelines where you can figure out what the runoff is from that particular area without ever having to go and, you know, put out basically rain buckets and flow meters. You know what is going to be probably coming off of that. And it's, it's fairly accurate.
If I may, one of the things that I think has been, um, been a challenge here. And you and I talked about. What's the difference between clearing and timber harvest? Right? This, maybe there's a lot. But from the average viewer, so to speak, what's the difference? Hard to see, but there's an enormous difference when it comes to the code. The timber harvest, which is an agricultural activity, selectively choosing product to be removed and used and sold as a commodity versus just removing trees so that I can get them out of the way to do my development? Or just getting trees out of the way so that I don't have to look at it? Either way, trees are coming down. But there is an important distinction there of what I suppose right now the individual calls it. And really it has to do with where it's going. If I were to start making my list, and frankly I have, of areas that we need to think about and look at, defining that in some way perhaps is an important one because you talk about clearing having these requirements um, of amount of of time and when it can be done, when it cannot be done, and if it's going to be done before a certain date, there are exceptions. That's a clearing activity. It's not a timber harvest activity. That's a clearing activity. We were never asked about a clearing activity. We were asked about a timber harvest. There aren't regulations around timber harvests other than it's an agricultural use, which is a permitted use and as of right use in that zone. And interestingly enough, is a permitted as of right use after a request of the planning or of the inland wetlands agency in a wetland. In a wetland. It is an activity as of right. So this is the, this is what I think one of the things we're all kind of butting our heads over.
I don't think there's any confusion. The town made a major mistake issuing the permit to the tree harvesting over. I'm reading the regulations right now. It's black and white. I mean, it's, it's semantics whether or not you want to say, yeah, there is, there is, the town can issue, it says right here, the town can issue, uh, approval if they're, if they're given some reason, but it goes beyond that. Because of the level of disturbance over there, this 100% needed to come to the commissions and it didn't. So I think we can all admit that the town may have made a mistake in this and let's move on and correct it because it's right here. I'm reading it. I mean, I won't bother any, if anybody wants to read this, it's right here. It's like, it's section 3.1 in the watershed area. So a lack of knowledge about these regulations or whatever the case may be, it should have never happened in the first place. So I think we can move on from that and talk about how we correct this from happening in the future. Can we all agree maybe? Or get defensive about something that we can't fix now?
Before we do that, can John respond to that, uh, those statements?
And when it became administrative in nature? Versus coming to the.
It's not administrative in nature. This specific activity that brought this all about in the regulations that just passed in 2001 should have come to the commissions. It's, it's clear, it's black and white. And why, and why the town couldn't stop it? I'm Wes Jenks with the Conservation Lake Commission. These regulations say right in them, section 3.1, Lake Pocatapog Protection Zone, these should have come before the commission, period. It's cut and dry. I, I would be curious, I have a question. Has the, has an attorney been consulted about this specific regulation? Because it seems to me, and this could just be rumor, that the request for a cease and desist on that site wasn't listened to and it had continued. And I'm assuming the town's concerned over litigation. And I would be too, because the town made a mistake issuing this permit. So that opens the town up to litigation. So I can understand the concern. But what are we going to do about it? Has a, has an attorney reviewed this? Can we stop the activity temporarily? What's going on in the short term? In the long term, maybe we can fix this and get some clarification and make sure everybody's educated about it. But what's happening right now? Because what I'm reading right here is, so, there was something went wrong and mistakes were made and we're here to fix it, but the regulation's already here. It's, it's written right here.
Could John respond to that? Please.
Well, okay, so, so the, the, the breadth of the statement, section 3.1 says you, you've got to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think is lacking nuance. And, and I would, I would ask specifically which regulation people would feel, well, I'm going to back up.
Um, just 2,500 feet. 2,500 square feet.
Okay, you're, you're citing, if I'm, if I'm right, you're citing section 3.1 D C.
Yeah, uh,
Yes.
You can tell it's C too.
Is that right?
Yes, C, C, C and D. And the, and the seasonal clearing that got issued a, uh, you know, um, got approved with, you know, from the department, like I said, so there's, there's multiple ones here. And did they, did they, did they place a bond? Did they have sediment? Do they have a $2,500 bond when they got the permit? Because that's what this says. I'm just reading it.
Yeah, no, when you read it and you said, you, there is no place where it says $2,500 bond. Anyway, the, what, what, uh, first of all, this was, this is, uh, designated as an administrative review. I, I would point out and I, and I was, I don't, I don't want to do this. I, I'm not appointed as the town zoning enforcement officer. I worked very closely with the town zoning enforcement officer and I, and I supported and conferred on this decision. Um, and, and administrative decisions like this are designated by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the zoning enforcement officer. And it is up to him to review, interpret and enforce the regulations. If any individual resident is aggrieved, including a commissioner, is aggrieved of that, they can challenge that review and decision through the zoning board of appeals. Um, erring individual disagreements with interpretation of an act already taken and not formally, uh, appealed to the zoning board of appeals is, I think, a questionable activity that, that, that people want to be engaging in, uh, in, in public like this. That said, the, the, the 2,500 square foot, not $2,500, 2,500 square foot, uh, disturbance refers to a project, which refers to the development activity. Um, again, it was not deemed that timber, that, that seasonal clearing is in a different section of that regulation, treated separately from development or projects.
They're all about words. What does a project mean to you? Because that's what it says. It says a project. What, what do you consider a project? You don't consider having excavators and machines over on site knocking down? You don't consider having excavators and machines over on site knocking down trees a project that's just timber harvesting? I mean, that's the thing is like, we're, I'm not arguing, we're, we're trying to fix this because what happened? And if the, and if a developer is going to come and do that, they should have done something ahead of time to make sure what the runoff happened didn't happen. So again, this needs to be cleared up, but essentially we kind of have what we need here. It's just something got missed. Or the translation is wrong. Or the public, and I'm, I'm not understanding this correctly.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the permit was issued several days after the. Clearing or whatever began.
Right, well, and, and you know, that's, that's a, a problem endemic to all kinds of zoning enforcement and any, any activity. Is some people will begin activity. Either with, with disregard for the regulation or an ignorance of the regulation, and that's why we have enforcement mechanisms and, and.
Both activities does not involve the conversion of forest land and its outside critical areas and associated buffers. I mean, it's just line after line of things that should have not gone unrecognized.
I would, I would refer to the town manager's comments about the difference between, uh, you know, site preparation and tree clearing.
If I can, Wes, I do appreciate you mentioning. So the activity started, wasn't permitted. And so when they got called out on it, they came into the office and a permit was granted and everything is set. I mean, that, 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 that aspect of what concerns me as well. I mean, you have a. An activity happening within the watershed, within the Lake Poketipog protection zone. That was not permitted appropriately. So when they get called out. They come down to the office, they get the permit. And that's the end of the conversation. Like we, the town of East Hampton should have some redress for someone who violates. The regulations and the expectations of the town. And I also would say, I believe this, this body also under timber harvest then just file the subdivision request. Right, I think I read that. This, this is more than, I mean problematic for me, and so if we want to talk about regulations, the town of East Hampton needs to adopt. A very stiff fine structure. To address, and I do actually believe that's also in the, the P and Z regulations relative to enforcement and the fact that it is a misdemeanor crime under your regulations. With a fine, um, and that should be pursued by enforcement and what we're doing.
Okay, well, so in, in that case, I would. I, I, unless I, unless I miss something, I don't believe. That there is an ordinance established fine system enabled in the zoning regulations.
If you go to the bottom of section three L talks about penalties.
Three L is penalties for violation, that's in the floodplain regulations. Um, and it may, you, you may, and I mean, this, this first line of that. As again, penalties for violation, this is subsection L within the floodplain regulations of the zoning regulations. Any violation of the provisions of this regulation or failure to comply with any of its requirements. I think it's debatable, uh, whether or not something nested in the floodplain regulation. Is applicable to the entire zoning regulations as a whole, but I think you point out an important, you point out an important issue. Which is that the, the town needs to be much more clear about, um, its procedures. Which I believe that's right now, the town is only operating under the state statute, section eight dash twelve. Uh, zoning violation procedures, which essentially requires, uh, you to take a violator to court. In order to prove violation and then to, to maybe recoup, uh, damages or penalties. In order to, there's a, there's another section, section eight, twelve. A, which allows municipalities, empowers municipalities to establish. A, a fine and penalty, uh, system at a local level. I did not find that system established in your ordinances. So, uh, uh, now we are maybe getting at, maybe at getting at a what can the town do next? I think you should take a look at your ordinance structure to specifically empower the zoning regulations. To do a more proactive, shorter turnaround. Finding of violation and issuance of essentially ticketing. Um, which I don't believe your current regulations empower. And I, I'm not your town attorney here, but I, um. Am loathe in, in a, in a case where I am the zoning officer, which again in East Hampton, I am not. To stick the town's neck out on, on a, on a violation. Process that I'm not a hundred percent sure that I'm right about because that's an invitation for the, the town to lose a lawsuit. Um, and if you're trying to sue someone for a timber harvest in Lake Poketipog area. Under a, a violation provision within the floodplain regulations. You're out on a limb.
I have a question. Um, first of all, John, I think you've done a nice job of explaining how all these committees interact with each other. And so that has been very helpful. Um, I think what brought us all together was this. Clearcutting, timber harvesting, whatever you want to call it, uh, that is creating a lot of runoff into the lake. And ultimately, I think nobody really wants to see that. So in this discussion, I think I'm struggling to understand, do we have a gap in the regulations? Did we have a miss in how the regulations were supposed to be applied? Um, like where is, where is the gap that allowed these people to do what they're doing? And how would we go about addressing it? Cause to Wes's point. Um, it's not really helpful finger pointing, but it is good to understand where these gaps are and how do we close them for the future?
Sure, so I, and, and first, I'm, I'm going to make myself an even less popular person at this discussion by pushing back a little bit. Um, over the assertion that the, the clearing that was taking place on Lakewood Road was creating. Significant runoff problems to the lake. There were, there were certainly claims of that. Um, but you know, repeated visits to the site to assess erosion sedimentation controls. By, uh, by myself and, and I, and the, the, the town building official, zoning officer. You know, revealed that generally speaking, uh, erosion sedimentation control for timber harvest was being followed. I will note, uh, uh, as, as someone noted earlier, that we are having the wettest year in the last hundred and twenty-five years. And so there was more runoff from everything in all circumstances in every part of town, everywhere for a year. Um, but there was no obvious evidence that, that. The, the relatively routine, although high visibility tree clearing on Lakewood Road resulted in some significant. Negative runoff based damage to the lake area. End of, end of statement there. Um, I do think that, that insofar as. The regulations as they are written did not result in, uh, well, number one. Proper voluntary compliance and number two. The type of oversight that so many members of the public and members of commissions would like to have had. In this circumstance, well then, yes, I think there is a disconnect between. The way the regulations are written, interpreted and, and what the town may actually want. In this circumstance, so I, I do think there might be a gap as to. Yeah, uh, yeah, I, but I think, you know, certain circumstances are. Much, much more highly visible and therefore much more sensitive, but I, you know. Do I think this is a systemic failure? No. Do I think some tweaking might be able to? Be useful? Yeah, I do, but, um, yeah.
John, how many trees can be cut down before it's considered to be a timber harvest? What's the minimum amount? Cause if, if I have trees on my property, do I have to come for a permit to cut down those trees?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, no, for a, a, a timber harvest has, is inland wetland, um, or DEP. Regulations and there's cords and, and board feet. I can't remember them offhand. I know Dave, you had a slide on that. Um, I can, I could, I could pull it up, but, um, there, you know, there is a DEP. Uh, there is an amount, um, of, of. You know, cords or board feet. That are being harvested that would trigger oversight by DEP. It's, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a fairly big number. But yeah, generally speaking. You know, it's, it's, there's a very gray spectrum between, you know, cutting down, uh, you know, a, a, a tree that's struggling in your yard. And you're worried it's going to fall in your garage. Um, or clearing two or three or four of those. And, you know, all the way up the spectrum to, you know, commercial timber harvest or then, you know, clearcutting a wetland. But generally speaking, deference is given to people being able to cut trees on their own property.
And I think that goes to this question of defining, you know.
I, 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 I want to read something to everybody. Clearing activity that will result in exposed soils exceeding five hundred square feet shall not be permitted from October first through April thirtieth. However, planning and zoning officials may approve an exemption to this requirement for the following activities. I'm not going to read the whole thing. It goes A to F and I'm not the first person to point this out. There's been members on planning and zoning that point this out. As somebody that runs my own business, when a mistake gets made in my company, I don't care who does it. The boss takes the blame. The town messed up on this. I don't care what anybody says. We need to move on from this. We need to fix it. If we need it to be clearer, that's great, but anybody that comes into the town of East Hampton should read three point one very carefully before they get a job here. Because Jeremy worked incredibly hard on this. It wasn't adhered to. And now we're dealing with the repercussions and I assure you, because I've seen the footage. That property is running off into the lake as well as this one right here still. So can we move on past this? Because it's black and white to me. I mean, if anybody wants.
And I'm glad you added to you.
Go ahead.
Because it's, we keep getting mad when we talk about words and we talk about distinction. I'll say it again. Clearing does not always equal timber harvest.
Five hundred square feet, Dave. It says it right there in black and white. The town messed up, period.
It, I've exposed, sorry.
I'm going to tell you that I'm getting tired of being yelled at. Because it's not. Clear is a bell. Wes, you're reading to me clearing activities.
Five hundred square feet of soil disturbance. It says it right in there. Read it. Three point one. We don't need to get into it.
One V E two. E is clearing activity.
I, my, my comment is done. I think the town made a mistake. I wish they'd just admit it and we could move on.
Hey, hey, John, is it true that any application, including an application for timber harvest could be referred to the planning and zoning commission for input? Before it's approved?
By whom? Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the zoning enforcement officer felt uncomfortable about, about making a decision or wanted additional input, of course. He could consult with, uh, the planning and zoning commission.
I believe the last time we had a comparable type of harvest, it, it came in front of our commission and it was because Jeremy felt it was a significant enough activity. To come in front of the commission. So can we all agree here, at least as a form of progress for this meeting? That anything of this nature, small or big. Gets referred to the commission for review. So town staff is not in a position where they're individually trying to interpret these incredibly. Confusing regulations and we can discuss it as a commission and help guide town staff in their, in their decision. I think that would be an important short-term kind of solution. And Ray's looking at me like, no, we don't want anything else on our agenda.
I was just going to add to that, because having seen all the timber harvest that have come in over the years. Just add to that, it doesn't have to come to the full commission. The chairman or his designate. Should be able to take a look at some of the timber harvests in town. Reach the amount of it gets triggered that it has to have a permit by DEP regulations. But it's not large enough. That it actually is something we could, we would really care about, especially if it's in the woods. Away from all wetlands and not in the Lake Poketipog area, but not to parse it any further, but. Bring it to the commission at the discretion of the chairman or his designate. Otherwise, we're going to be deluged with enormous amounts.
I should clarify, the Lake Poketipog protection zone. Any activity within the Lake Poketipog protection zone.
Wh- whichever, that would be fine, but. Not, I, we, we really don't have the time to see every single harvest, that's all. That, I agree with you. That's very reasonable.
How many harvests are happening?
It used to be about two to three a month. In the summer time, not right now, but it used, but there was a cycle where we were seeing them. An enormous amount of them every single month.
But not necessarily two, three in the lake protection zone, right?
That is correct. Yes.
The point being made, this was a significant enough activity in close enough proximity to the lake where.
I agree with you.
I think it should have been referred to somebody. Other than an administrative decision. I'm not pointing fingers at anybody. I'm just saying that.
I think one of the things I think we could all agree on is we need to get, whether it's a panel or an outside attorney or somebody. Uh, together to go over the three point one zone and make sure that it. Measures with the, the state and the, uh, other town regulation. And that requires specifically the language, so we don't refer to projects and activities. And we've got four or five different terms in here, which today's point is very correct that. They need to be synced. You know, the, uh, the purpose of this get together tonight. Was to get everybody in the same room. Hearing the same things. And really analyzing. What may be going wrong and where, and maybe doing a little introspection. As to what our board. Our respective commission is doing, what we know. We think we're missing something. Exactly what's going on. Are we all familiar with the regulations we need to be familiar with? And all the nuanced wording, et cetera. We need a little more education for that. Uh, at each board. Uh, that's what I'm hearing. I mean, I, I had this for the first time forty years ago, I was on P and Z, so I forgot a lot of the terminology. But, um, it seems to have gotten a lot more complex. And I think it's our duty, certainly in these, in these commissions. To, uh. Dig in a little bit more, not rely perhaps on what we think we know for many years. I know a lot of you people sat on these boards for years. Uh, maybe we need a refresher as to education. Uh, on these regulations. And this is just a suggestion. I'm not saying do, but. I would think we should think about that. I think we should consider, uh. Enforcement of these regulations, what we think about that at each of our boards. How that can be made better or, or not. I think what you consider is the communication between boards. Good and sufficient. And we hear about parallel, uh, uh, which I say, uh, uh, parallel working on, on. Projects, I'll use that word. With respect to those things and, and lastly. One of the main reasons to call this meeting. Is to perhaps think about. Things that are, have been and have become, uh, really not under our control. Uh, like, uh, climate change. Uh, the excessive rain that we've had this season. Uh, has helped to, um. Amplify a lot of these situations, make them, make them worse. And perhaps, uh, these situations are not just, uh, a one-off. Maybe, uh, maybe these are sorts of things that we're going to have to deal with regularly in the future. That's the purpose, I think, in my view. For what tonight's meeting is. We talk about going forward, yes, but it's not just. It's not just on this part, it's on this part. It's on everything going forward that we as, we as regulatory boards and, and, and town, town council. Really need to be sensitive to. Uh, I offer that to, to, to all the boards and say, hey, look. Maybe we have to up the game. Uh, maybe some of our meetings have to be devoted to this sort of discussion, not just passing projects. In my view. So. I think this is an opportunity to think about those things and do those sorts of things because that's what the town needs. That's what the town needs. So I would encourage all, all of you boards to, uh, perhaps start thinking about those things, perhaps put them on your agenda. And thinking long-term. Uh, and. At the, uh, at the council meeting, we did mention the, uh, the term moratorium on buildings specifically. Relative to the lake area. Uh, that is certainly, uh. Uh, that is certainly uh under P and Z. Uh, P and Z's guidance, consideration. Uh, if that's what you need, if that's what P and Z feels they need to in fact take a look at what's going on. And do we have the regulations? Do we have our common understandings in good shape to go forward into into an unknown future, at least relative to the climate? Then I personally would recommend that you consider uh limited in scope in time. Uh, and for specific reason, uh, which would be if nothing else, climate change. So I'll leave it there.
I'll keep this short. Uh, we did put the uh on the agenda for moratorium for next month as per our regulations and per statute. Uh, the moratorium will give us a really great break because we've already started to talk about it, updating our stormwater regulations. The state has come out with a new set of stormwater regulations. Uh, some of it has not been finalized. Most of it has been. It's going to be in that form that we have to right now. It's available from the state. They have a couple of great instructional videos that go with that. And we've already discussed, we'll take this opportunity to update our regulations. We're going to be required to do it. So might as well just do it sooner rather than wait till later, which would be next year. So if we have a moratorium in place, we start doing it sooner. The regulations are very good. They do recognize increased rainfall, increased extreme storms, all those kinds of things. So I I think it's it will be actually helpful for us to do that.
Very good. I would I would just point out one other thing. Uh, councilman and I raised the issue of enforcement. Uh, the town manager and I and uh my vice chair discussed this a little bit, and we're looking at how we might be able to put a part time enforcement officer into this budget. We're going to be dealing with that in council budget. Within the next.
But they need they need to have teeth in their enforcement um with fines and.
That's up to I believe P and Z or in the wetlands and town staff.
What a bare minute. Can I move from one scar to another scar and talk about up on the hill here? So I do believe in the sub, and I may be wrong, so help me out. The enforcement provision in the subdivision regulations allow for a stop order until all of the soil and erosion controls are put into place. Um, we know that this appears in violation of the Lake Bogota Bog Protection Zone regulations. I mean, it's very obvious. They cleared way more than they had to. And it's continuing to be a sediment issue um in the lake.
And the hill behind.
And the hill behind. I mean, it's it's clearly not effective. So the question would be, I mean, in this, it talks about, and it's section eight, page twenty six, where it says that the regulation shall be the responsibility of planning and zoning, sorry, not not trying to put it, or its designated agent. Failure to properly install and or maintain any erosion and sediment controls may result in the issuance of a stop work order until the problem is satisfactorily corrected. That has been a mess all winter long. And it's completely open. And that is causing problems, I think, in the poet section where the runoff is going, where we have brown water entering Lake Bogota Bog. And so it would be another nice action out of this meeting to have some enforcement happen at the very minimum to stop work up there until that is addressed for us as a community.
Well, just clear about what work would you stop?
I think they can stop all activity until they fix the damage they've caused to the um erosion up on that hill. I don't know how to word it correctly for you, but they opened the entire section up. And if you look in again in the Lake Bogota Bog Protection piece, and that's section three, one, I think it's three, one, right, Wes? Uh, it clearly puts parameters on that, and they haven't followed it. And we have significant sediment going into the lake through the poet section. We've heard it at the lake commission multiple times. They should be held responsible. And maybe if they can't keep building, they'll fix the erosion issues that we have down on in in the poet section or the uh the runoff into our lake.
The other argument that keeps getting brought up on that is, well, we have a permit. We've done everything that the permit required. Well, that's an invalid argument, in my opinion. Just because you have a permit does not permit you to go and violate the law. If you buy get a pistol permit, you can have a gun. That doesn't mean you go shoot somebody. He has a permit to build, but he's also supposed to be doing it within the current regulation, and he's not. Or the reason, let me put it this way. The results are insufficient, inadequate. Not that he and he's got a good attitude and effort, and he gives you that, well, we're trying, we're doing everything we can, but it's not working. So our choice is either do something about it or just let thousands of pounds of phosphorus run in the lake every year. I'm not exaggerating. That puts a brown plume out in the water a hundred feet. So.
It probably does, but and I'm not defending the guy by any means, but in the wintertime, you can't lay topsoil there.
He shouldn't have opened up the property. He opened up the entire property or that entire section. That's my issue. No, I mean, you gotta, the regulations clearly state, you'll only open up what's absolutely necessary between a period of time, because you're right, you can't grow grass, you can't put topsoil. So why would you expose all that, given the amount of rain and what realities in the soil condition? Because it's cheap and it's easy, and the town of East Hampton is going to turn the other eye. Because we don't have enforcement and there's no real penalty. And the only penalty that's effective for people who are making money off the land and building these projects is financial. It's just the reality of it. Unless you hit somebody's pocket broke, they're going to continue to do things like start a timber harvest and then go get a permit. And I don't blame the town for that. I blame our lack of regulations and our ability to find. What consequence was there? None.
Yeah, it comes back to clarity on that too, right? Because my question was, how many trees does it take before it's a timber harvest? So the guy could have cut down ten trees, and you guys think that it's a hundred trees that he cut.
No, they got a documented number.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
You're right.
But he did go, he he did go for a permit. Did he do it? Should he have done it at the onset? Yeah, because he probably knew how many trees he was going to cut down initially.
Yeah.
He doesn't think he's just going to cut down.
No, he's got in the contract and the permit. Talking about that, I think it's twenty nine thousand board feet or something like that. It says right the quantity in there. But the other thing that's disturbing about up above here is the section that's built, the units are built there. The hall, the slope behind that says we're not supposed to have steep slopes or whatever. That was seeded and planted going on two years ago now. I don't have an exact, but it's at least two years. Go look at the runoff there. That's going into the pond on the backside of that thing, which is a tiny little retention pond. It's totally, it's totally insufficient. And, you know, that's we we gotta do something to fix it.
The most important thing is that we fix it going forward as well. That's the most important thing. And, you know.
Not most important, if you're the guy with the house down on the lake.
You've got mother nature coming down on you in a situation where you that you could never anticipate. You know, that's a pretty tough thing.
But those slopes, those slopes up there.
A light brand with.
I hear what I hear what you're saying. But you know what? Well, we gotta move forward. Figure pointing. What what does it? I'm not sure where where it gets you, but the most important thing of these occurrences is it tells us that we've got work to do for the future. That, to me, that is the most important thing.
That's bleeding down.
So that's that's what we have to do. That's why we're here tonight in mind you. That's why we call that a party.
The thing is, the future, the future is easier to do. We can talk about, we come up, okay, we agreed tonight, we gotta do some clarification in the records. That's that's progress. That's the easy thing. So what do I tell, what do I tell those people who have the houses down there where the water's running there and they got a brown plume in front of them?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, the rain.
Well.
It is. I mean, but they, we deserve, we deserve some, we deserve some attention to their problem also. And we have the regulations that are in place. Whether they're exactly clear or whether they're uh being ignored, whatever, they're there. So let's let's look at trying to do something to fix it. I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody. It's the problem.
Jeff, does the lake commission have any further suggestions on how to uh resolve the runoff issue, whether additional central power systems, putting those in place? What have you made other suggestions?
The four things we're talking about right now is dredge, those ponds have to be dredged and be enlarged, consider. Uh, that will help. Also, John Tucci, the airator operator, feels there's a finer uh uh mesh of uh of silk fence material that could be put in there, which would reduce uh uh reduce some of it. Um, I have four others, I think, or two others. I can't find them.
We're just taking action.
Yeah. Uh. We had, uh, we submitted a uh proposal. Sean, you have a copy of the proposal there? I'm not sure if it went to Dave or not, but hit the box, second page, there's four items on there. The dredging is probably the biggest thing that can be uh uh that can be done. We need more retention swales on the back hill there. Uh, that's gotta be done. And some other kind of vegetation uh on that hillside, because what's there isn't holding back the water uh that's running.
And it's just the pitch you guys are saying?
Yeah.
What's that? The pitch.
Yeah. The pitch, yeah.
And also relative to enforcement, I just noticed that the application that they would have had to file with the land use office. Um, it it acknowledges that their responsibilities for best management practices during and after construction and testifying that they're aware of the potential for the assessment of fines should the best management practices not be adhered to. And I think you could walk up there and not only the ones that are in our existing regulations are not being followed, but the other list of pamphlets that are in the the regulations. So I'm just asking as in an idea of moving forward, that our zoning enforcement officials will up there and require that to happen. And if it's not happening, that all work ceases until it does. That is your enforcement arm right now, and it's not palpable because people like to be nice. But it's not helping our watershed. And so we have to take action or it's not going to be fixed.
The other, the other two things exploring uh explore treatment of ponds, reduce phosphorus content. We've done some initial uh uh inquiries on that and to the effectiveness possibly of the meta flock treatment that we did to the lake last uh last summer, we did meta flock, I believe, uh might be uh appropriate for these retention ponds. Uh, and they're small ponds, so it would not be that expensive. And then the other thing is uh we need to hire uh an ex and some independent expertise to get more solutions. GZA, who's our limonologist, lake expert on retire on the low watershed. He's on, they're on retainer, but we have them for a block of doing the reporting and the things. But I talked to Ben, and they have another department in their company that specializes in waterfront retention, watershed retention stuff. So I'd like to, I've asked them to give us a quote on what they were caught charged to come in and look at the whole thing and put a fresh set of eyes on it.
And that should be assessed to the developer, not.
Yeah.
Paying for the solution? Would it be the town or would that be on the developer?
Should be on the developer.
Yeah, so I think that would be a good time for me to chime in. I'm going to try to keep it as brief as I can. Um, especially with all these decision makers in the room at the same time, which is pretty rare. Um, for one, I feel like the the logging permit is a loophole that we could close out moving forward. Um, you know, and that is what it is. Uh, I know it's kind of oversimplifying things, but if we were to eliminate, not allow any more major sub developments in the lake watershed area until Lake Bogota Bog has uh what I would say gone back to what it used to be. I know that might be a crazy idea, but certainly we wouldn't have to be dealing with this moving forward if this type of activity wasn't allowed in the future. Uh, there's plenty of land in East Hampton to get developed, and I think uh Mr. Johnson pointed out that this town has six hundred percent more building permits than comparable towns in the area. So maybe some developers can find some other areas to build their houses in town. Now, if that's not a possibility, whatever you believe in, I uh I I got blessed in a couple ways. I've shared a couple documents with all the chairs. Uh, ones from Ever Blue Lakes, which has some best management practices in about five major cities in this country. They're actually very similar to ours. The reason why I wanted to speak next is because a lot of that includes the the future property owner having to pay to manage their their stormwater retention areas. So where I said everything happens for a reason, I I was with a client just the other day on a property, and this is in the town of North Haven, and I sent this to everybody. If anybody wants copies of this, you can receive them. But the town's actually, the developer had to put in their stormwater management ahead of being able to subdivide the lot and sell the pieces of land. And the town is granted a deed that there's a deed restriction on the property that allows the town to go in and manage the storm water system if the property owner doesn't do so. So they're required biannually, this is in the town of North Haven, I provided to everybody. If you want to email me before we go, but all the commission heads have this. Basically, twice a year, you have to submit your to the town showing that you're managing your stormwater. And if you don't, the town has the right to go in, like we're talking about, and fix it themselves. And then the owner has to pay for that work. So in the example of our using our grant money up at Skyline, where we used, we could have used that for another project, the the burden would have fallen onto those current landowners or that association to manage their stormwater. So we pretty much have everything already. It's just a matter of cleaning it up and making sure everybody's aware of what these regulations are. But it's, again, the only thing I see is that logging is a loophole and, you know, they're, how do we find people? But it's a deed restriction. Basically, the town is granted a deed if we are going to allow these sub developments to happen. The town now has a right of way to that property, and if it's not being managed and we have to go and invent it, they pay the full cost to to fix the problem. It's all, it's all right there. There's other cities that have already solved this issue. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. It's all right there. And will we have to hire somebody to be able to take care of that? I would assume it's going to be a similar process to what Jeremy went through to pass the these revised special watershed things and and get that updated. I would assume it's going to require an attorney's review. And, you know, somebody's going to have to pass it like Jeremy did. I I don't know how many of you were involved in that process, but I think the I think the work here is far less than anybody anticipates because it's a matter of cleaning up what we already have and having the enforcement to go in and and manage this. So I I think with a little bit of tweaking and not much time, we should be able to cure a lot of these things. And if any of the the current developers are listening, why don't you do this ahead of time on your own accord, just as good faith to show that you care about the town? Like, we shouldn't even have him be sitting in a room of all of us, taking our free time, dealing with this. They should have done it ahead of time. If I bought that land and I'm planning on building twelve houses, I wouldn't have started logging until I put in my storm management system ahead of time. To me, it's common sense, but, you know, what do I have?
Um, John, I actually have a question for you. So we've talked about edge water. The lake commission has come forward with a list of suggestions. Um, in your opinion, is that something we can now ask the developer to do? Um, has he already done everything he's supposed to? Uh, you know, what, where can we go with this right now?
Well, I I think you'd always be, I my my sense is that he, the developer has been maintaining a fairly uh active conversation back and forth with your lake consultant on uh his management of the erosion sedimentation stuff. So I I would imagine, and I found him receptive to, you know, uh, reaching out from from staff as well. Um, you know, if you if you have some good faith suggestions, I I'm sure he would he would listen. Um, as to whether or not he would be required to uh implement your suggestions, I I think you're on on somewhat shakier legal ground, again, not as your attorney. Um, but I think the 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 challenge that we that we've seen on this on this project um is again a a case of uh adherence to the regulations and the and the perceived outcomes. Um, and I'm not wanting to to re-litigate all of this, but um both, I believe, both planning and zoning and wetlands commissions um found that there was nothing substantive in the way that the erosion. in the way that the erosion and sedimentation controls had been designed, implemented, or maintained that were in violation of the, the approved design. Which unfortunately was based on the two thousand and two or two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Guidelines, which assume, uh, basically a two inch model rainstorm. And then, of course, in the last year, we've had, you know, multiple six inch rainstorms, you know, within, within days of each other. Um, you know, this erosion sedimentation system was not designed for the wettest year in a hundred and twenty-five years. Um, it is, it is certainly fair to be frustrated by it. It is certainly fair to look for improvements. Um, what has been a challenge is sort of shaking an angry fist and saying we should sue his ass because we don't have the, the regulatory jurisdiction to do so. Again, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Wetlands Commission and the Conservation Lake Commission all approved the design of the, the, the stormwater systems that are in place. They're overwhelmed. There's no question. They're overwhelmed. Um, but that does not mean rules have been broken.
But John, does that, so you're saying that once a permit is issued, the town has no recourse to go back and say, hey, this is inadequate, we need to rethink this. There's absolutely no way you can do that.
Sure, you, sure you can. You can't, but you can't say you must do this or I will sue you. Um, because you are the entity that approved this design.
Well, just to be clear, according to the regulations, they signed as part of their piece that they agreed to the best management practices and the regulations. They are not, therefore, this is, I'm not even talking about stormwater runoff and all of that. I'm saying just basic regulations of the town of East Hampton and the best management practices that are listed there. They're not compliant. And so the town does have the ability because they agreed to them.
It does, it's, what, what, what elements of the stormwater erosion and sedimentation control regulations has not been followed?
But actually, because I'll, I'll, I'll keep with the themes around words matter. It says verifying that the applicant is aware of his or her responsibilities for best management practices during and after construction, and testifying that they're aware of the potential for the assessment of fines should best management practices not be adhered to. And then they, in the regulations, we list the best management practices, including the other elements. So outside of our regulations, there's section F, which has the best management practices. And as Chuck talked about, the minimization of, um, steep slopes, uh, which clearly didn't happen back there. Um, you know, the amount of open land between October and, and April, all of those pieces are elements that haven't been followed. Right? I'm not even at the stormwater retention pond not being sufficient for the amount that they're getting because of, you know, the increased um, precipitation over the last two years.
It's not under the best management practice is where you're going.
Wouldn't seem to.
Where are you, where are you pulling, where are you pulling the phrase best management practices from? Because that doesn't appear in the subdivision regulations.
Well, I'm pulling it from the regulations, the application requirements.
Yeah.
Um.
Were those regulations in effect prior to this development?
Three point one F is the.
I don't know if they were.
Now, this is a mud development, so I don't know if this is outside of that per viewer.
I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question.
Well, Kevin, do they have, do they have to get approval for every phase? Yes, so I, I think the last phase came after this for sure, like at least the ones they're doing right now.
I don't know if this signed statement has ever obtained.
But I think they're under a global thing.
I, again, another potential loophole we just discovered is like, how does that affect existing projects when they go for the next phase? It should have to adhere to this, these new regulations. Were they? I don't know, but they should have been.
Well, it's, it's the whole lot that they have. How many acres? Seventy acres.
They, they started that one.
They have seven phases.
The first page.
They have seven.
Those regulations, these regulations were put in long before, long before that.
And didn't they just come back before? Because I know we saw something about they asked to.
They claimed that was just a financial thing. They wanted to split the, the next, the two buildings that they're putting up now were originally gonna be built together, and then there's two more to go behind that, I believe, and they wanted to split it into two properties. They claimed it was strictly a financial, uh, decision, yeah.
So I would consider this another gray area. And it might only apply to them, but to someone that already has approval for a sub development when they come to the next phase, do they have to adhere to this? Or because they got their permit six years ago, they don't?
Well, that's a giant question, I think, and I can't speak on behalf of that.
So John, is there something that's actually being violated that would allow us to issue a cease and desist order?
I, 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 I don't broadly say yes or no at this point. I think we, we would have to. I mean, there's, because there's, there's, there's multiple sets of regulations, and I mean, I'm looking at the best management practices, um, which are just, it's a list of methods. Um, those aren't regular, it's not, that's not necessarily enforceable zoning regulation. Um, it's, it's just a series of methods. Um, I think, I think we, we have looked, we have looked at a number of the regulations relative to the design, relative to the approvals. Um, and, and have not found a blatant violation. That's not to say that there isn't something there. Um, it's, I guess it's a matter of, I, I mean, frankly, you would, you would probably need someone with a, with a slightly better engineering background than I, and perhaps someone with a slightly better legal background than I, because I think you're gonna need a combination of those things if you are looking for essentially a way in, a, a regulatory way into, to some enforcement. Um, I, but I guess my, my, my question to the, the assembly who, who would be looking for more aggressive enforcement is what, what, if, if the problem we're trying to solve is to um, get this site buttoned up and, and complete such that it is stabilized and is not uh, subject to repeated heavy, heavy rainstorms washing away some of the fine silts. Um, what would be preferable to having them proceed as quickly as possible to a conclusion? Rather than is, is, is stopping them better?
Did it turn runoff? Probably not.
No, at this point. The, the problem I have is I don't have any confidence that based on their performance with behind the two buildings and that slope there, which is running and contributing a large part of the silt to the runoff. That's been there two years. So if we're gonna get a year from now, another situation like that, I, I just don't have any confidence these guys are, which brings me to another recommendation I think the Lake Commission is, me, is making is that we take advantage of using independent third-party evaluators. Uh, no disrespect, but sometimes mistakes are gonna be made. And if, and, and if you get bad information from a, a, a expert that turns out to be wrong, you know, because he's being paid by the developer, I don't think that's good practice. I think you ought to take advantage of the opportunity to say, now, we're getting a third party to look at this in here, and you're gonna pay for it.
And we have.
Yeah, I know you have done that in the past, but I think it should be a more regular process. I mean, we got the guy from picking on Lakewood again, but we got the guy from here who's first uh, analysis said, oh, no, there's no wetlands or anything up there. And then after there's a little brouhaha raised, he comes back and last night at planning his own says, oh, yeah, well, he went back and he found out that, yes, there were some wetlands there. He's like, now.
That's right.
Do we believe him?
Well, he kind of lost his credibility.
He lost his credibility, yeah.
I, I understand. I agree with you. But part of it is in the state of Connecticut, wetlands are defined by wetland soil types. And to sample the entire area, given the amount of time that they normally do, and the kind of sampling that is best practice. If there's something very small, everybody, every single one of the guys that have come before us, there has been some regularly. There's been some times that they missed. If it's big, uh, no, we don't like you anymore. In the past, we have said, we'd like somebody else. But if it's somebody that we know and have trusted over time, if they miss something small, given best practices, given the sampling that they're supposed to follow, yes, that's why local knowledge and why public comment is good and said, we know that there is a, and they can point to it, because these guys, they visit it once, maybe twice. People that live around it know a lot more.
I, I was only up there once and it took me about two minutes at the end of Lakewood to see the stream running there, and I sent that information to Josh and inland wetlands to where, I just think it would be good policy, especially if we're gonna have the developers pay for it, to have a second set of opinions on major things. I'm not saying do it for, you know, every house that needs to be built or whatever, but on major developments like this, getting another opinion, another set of eyes on it is not a bad thing. Maybe somebody would have.
I agree.
So.
And I apologize. I'm not, I'm not trying to suggest that we simply use the stick to get our way. What I would say, however, is that what is happening up there needs to be addressed immediately and not two years from now. And again, and section after section enforcement is allowed, but the only tool we have is enforcement. So it, it seems to be the only tool to stop per court. There's no fines, there's nothing, that's the only stick you have right now in the regulations. And if they're not following, I mean, it would still, I guess that's the other question. The, the regulations relative here, do they apply to somebody who is still in the process of building?
Yes.
Right? So then they need to comply with them. They just have to provide the basic compliance. Unfortunately, the only tool we have is to stop.
Well, has that particular issue gone to the planning and zoning internally? Have you guys addressed that with them internally? On that hill there? Because the guy is very receptive to fixing issues. He's not. And I think he must talk to a few of you guys.
Yeah, yeah. He says, yes, I'm gonna do it. I'm spending more money. I get a list of, I'm gonna do this, I gotta put, do this. Okay, you know, I guess he's, he's trying. All I'm saying is the brown water's still running.
I know, but has that specific issue been addressed with the internal planning and zoning? Has it been brought to their attention?
Well, what the second, what?
Yeah, the building department.
You're talking about the second, getting the second.
No, they told the, the pitch of the hill.
Pitch of the hill, the opening of.
Contributed to what's going into the lake.
I don't know the answer to that. Okay, I can't.
Fair enough.
I can't. I believe it has, but I can't convince anybody to say that.
Okay, Chairman.
Uh, before we, uh, leave tonight, I've, given what we've all talked about and heard, um, I'd like to have, uh, the chairman or a representative of each of the three boards perhaps say what next steps might be for their post. What do they think each board should be doing now going forward? In, in addressing the issues, the your problems that we, we face, the things that we can fix, and what the long haul looks for our regulatory boards in town.
If I may, on behalf of the staff, um, notwithstanding the fact that the council sort of, if you will, gave us all homework. Um, bodies all received kind of that list of, let's take a look at our regulations, and this is the beginning of that conversation of looking at our regulations and where are those, those holes and those things that we need to fix. But from a staff perspective, um, we will, we will go back. Uh, we, we've been getting quotes for, uh, doing external reviews on subdivisions that are coming up. Uh, we'll get some quotes to reevaluate the permits that are in place and the permissions that are in place for the Edgewater development, uh, and ensure that those are being met. Um, we won't speculate on a, on a staff level about what we see when we go out there. We'll have an engineer come out and reevaluate. Um, we will, uh, uh, let's see, as well, we'll, we'll continue, um, to ensure that we can, using whatever tools we have uh, to, to get compliance, uh, we have in the past, as everybody has probably heard me say, uh, always attempted to get voluntary compliance because, as was pointed out this evening, otherwise we're spending, uh, time and effort taking people to court. We've done it. We've had, when we've had to, we've done it. Uh, but our goal has always been to, uh, as John sort of alluded to before, uh, our goal has always been to get compliance and get things done, uh, so that we can get, uh, get moving on. So, but probably the biggest thing that we'll do is we'll go back and reevaluate um, this development here and make sure that, uh, it's doing what it's supposed to be doing uh, under the regulations that are applicable to it. Um, and we will also, for our part, uh, continue our homework assignment of reviewing um, the regulations that we have in place and talk about staff as to where we think the holes are and where we think the challenges are. Uh, we, as the chairman alluded to, we've talked about how we handle enforcement a little bit differently. Uh, trying to put some resources back into that particular activity that had been taken away a long time ago. Uh, and perhaps those steps will, uh, from, from the town's perspective, uh, be good ones to, uh, to get people to. So those are the comments from staff on what we're gonna be doing in the next, uh, days.
Boards and commissions, Tom, it's you. You're committed to this as a town.
Yeah, on our agenda, we have a moratorium that we're looking to do uh, to set in place so that, um, they can freeze any future development, um, for a temporary point in time, possibly a year up to a year and a half. Um, until we can figure out exactly what we need to do. Um, we need to take a hard look at these three point one regulations. Um, get advice from our attorney. We love to do that. Um, and then have, um, discussions and something on the agenda or a tax amendment change to whatever that needs to.